Are we all ready? We'll call the Wilmer City Council meeting for Monday, August 20th, to order. Roll call.
Mayor Kelvin?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Schwantes?
Here.
Alvarado?
Here.
Osmus?
Here.
Meskey?
Here.
Plowman?
Here.
Fagerly?
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have five adjustments to the agenda. Is there anything? Well, I'll read through those and then if there's anybody else that has anything to adjust the budget. Industrial park land sale, letter of intent, Tiff for 15th Street flats, Robins Island concessionaires, sale of property to, for the barrel, and 2018 salary and staff changes. Other than those five items, anything else for additions or deletions to the agenda as presented? Sitting in hearing, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next are consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have council's approval, the city council meeting minutes of August 6th, Wilmer Municipal Utility Board minutes of August 13th, Board of Canvas minutes of August 16th, the Planning Commission minutes of August 1st, application for appointment of Lilbon Clark IV to the Human Rights Commission, a resolution to approve amendment to license agreement for use of public right-of-way, a resolution to approve special ag lease agreement with Groddus, and for council's acceptance, the Board of Zoning Appeals minutes of August 7th, police department statistics for the month of July, fire department statistics for the month of July, building report for the month of July, and the accounts payable through August, or August 2nd through the 15th of 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the consent items. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
I'd like to pull H just for discussion purposes.
H is in Henry?
Yep. Board of Zoning Appeals minutes.
We have a motion in a second to approve the other items. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meskey?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
I just was hoping that perhaps Mr. Peterson could just review what the request was and what was happening with that First Street Station variance request.
Sure. First Street Station is the proposed project that would replace the Dairy Queen at First Street and Wilmer Avenue. Being proposed is about, I think it's a 4,000-square-foot, four-unit strip center, and the reason for the variance was that the developer wanted to be able to expand the parking to the north a little bit, and so the parking request, the setback request resulted in a site plan that's very consistent with other development. Certainly isn't setting any precedent for setbacks on First Street. It will allow for the project to function well, be a good neighbor, address stormwater concerns, and basically be, I think, a really good replacement to the Dairy Queen that exists there right now.
So the adjustments are to the north? You said the setback limit?
Yes. There was a slight change on the west side. There was about a 10-foot change on the north side, but there will still be green area separations between Burger King and First Street Station, and all in all, the site plan presents a really nice balanced mix of development on that site.
Did I read somewhere that it was right in, right out? So does that mean there will not be left turns anymore?
The action taken by the Planning Commission was for right in, right out on Wilmer Avenue, and obviously it's right in, right out on First Street as well. We're all familiar with the congestion that occurs with traffic that crosses First Street going east trying to get into that Dairy Queen site, and you end up with people making left turns out of the westbound left-turn lane, and it really creates a bottleneck. So the staff comments that we received from engineering prior to going to the Planning Commission for their action proposed the right in, right out, and the Planning Commission thought that was a good, good action to take.
So that will allow us to stop the left turns maybe in the future somehow?
There better not be any left turns going eastbound into that property.
Okay.
That, at that point, that would become a violation. It will be signed. Technically, I don't think there should be now. Should there, Sean? Because of the way they cross the lanes?
Should, but there is.
Yeah.
I just know.
It's gonna take some education.
Okay. It was a concern, I know, from biking and some things that were going on with how we could change that intersection in the future, so I was just concerned with new development there, that we were being proactive into what we could possibly do in the future.
Yeah, I think the engineering recommendation is really proactive because it's going to provide a much safer alternative to access than existed previously, and it'll be up to the driving public to educate themselves and begin to understand the changes that are occurring there.
Okay. I think the fire chief had some comments in there, too. I didn't quite catch whether that was resolved or not.
Yeah, I think the fire chief's comments had to do with the width of the traffic lane on the east side of the building, and that's, that's been a drive-through that's functioned at that width for years, and there's really no need to access a building on that side with a fire truck. If they really needed to, they could get at it from the parking lot in the apartment building next door. So I think that's the decision the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals move forward on.
Okay. Thank you.
Otherwise, the property's certainly accessible from the west side.
Okay.
With equipment.
Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will there be any additional masking on the east side of that, or can they just leave it the way it is? As far as between the apartment and that property?
No, right now, there's a wall that exists there.
So that'll just remain there? They won't have to do any additional planting or anything there?
Okay.
I can make a motion for the approval of the Board of Zoning Appeals minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Board of Zoning Appeals minutes from August 7th. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is open forum. We have Mr. Steve Pepin. State your name and whether you reside in the city or not, and the city clerk will keep the time.
Steve Pepin, Wilmer Quincy Avenue. Thank you for your time, everyone. First, I would like to speak in regards to the future of the community and activity center. Concerned citizens have reached out to me, leaders and voices of the senior club have spoken. I've heard them, and I'm here as, as I share concern for how much their input will impact future plans. The seniors that use that facility are our parents, our children's grandparents. They are the roots and foundation of this growing community. I think more time and respectful communication with those that have utilized the facility for years is necessary. The hiring of a community center manager is a great start on the journey to do what's right. They have spoken now. We need to respect that. The time to hear them is now. If they want it to stay where it's at, then it should. On top of that, we can save more money keeping it there. All in all, it should be up to the people, especially the older generations that worked very hard before us. Let's get this one right. Secondly, several citizens have contacted me about the distribution center that's coming to Wilmer, and how are we gonna use the write-down policy to set the price on the property that's owned by the city? My understanding is if you bring, if it brings jobs $12 an hour, $13 an hour, we would give the property to them for dimes on the dollar. $12 an hour jobs isn't much more than minimum wage. I know that certain people don't mind having plenty of minimum wage jobs, but we do. We have enough of those jobs in the city. The people can't live off these minimum-paying jobs. Now, if we can have a business that wants to come to town that will pay 20 per hour or more, give them whatever they want. Nobody's going to move to Wilmer for a $12 an hour job. Now, we're not saying that they shouldn't come to town, but we're saying we shouldn't, the citizens shouldn't have to pay for them to come. The city needs to prosper. Citizens need healthy living wages. We need to go after a multimillion-dollar company to come to Wilmer. Cater to them and find a way. Give that company property in abatements because they will provide the higher livable wages to our citizens. Our citizens deserve to make a healthy living wage. It's our job to help create those opportunities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. We'll open the public hearing on rezoning property from R2, one- and two-family residential to government institution. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council. The city received a request from the Community Christian School to rezone the entirety of their property from R2 to the government institutional zoning classification. We discussed this with them for some time and thought it was more fitting that they be zoned government institutional and gives them a little more flexibility to do what they would like to do in the future with their expansion plans. Although schools are a permitted use in the R2 district, in the residential district, because of the location of this property on 19th Avenue and the size of the property that they own, they agreed with staff that it made sense to rezone it. So they applied for it. The Planning Commission considered it, and the Planning Commission recommends that the ordinance to rezone that property be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Thank you. Open this to the public. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this issue? Sitting in hearing, then I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council table. Council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll approve, or I'll recommend approval of staff's recommendation, which is to adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meskey?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is consideration of special assessment hearing for unpaid weed grass mowing removal charges. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, according to Wilmer Municipal Code, Chapter 9, Article 3, regarding the cutting of weeds or grass, and in case of noncompliance, the work that has been performed by the city or its agent, the cost can be certified as a special assessment against a property concerned. If the council approves tonight, the notice will be given to the property owners that the council will meet on the 4th of September to consider objections to the proposed assessment for the mowing cost incurred on the listed property owners.
Motion to set a public hearing on September 4th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to set a public hearing on September 4th for special assessments hearing for unpaid weed grass mowing removal charges. Discussion. Councilmember Alvarado.
Okay, I guess I'm gonna ask for some education here. If they do not pay for the grass mowing, is there a lien thrown against their property, then?
That's what this is doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional discussion. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is consideration of special assessment hearing for unpaid nuisances and general removal charges. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, according to Wilmer Municipal Code, Chapter 9, Article 1, regarding the removal of a hazardous building and the securing of a property, work that has been performed by the city or its agent, the cost can be certified as a special assessment against a property concerned. If council approves, a notice will be given to the property owners that the council will meet on September 4th to consider objections to the proposed assessment for the removal of a hazardous building and the securing of a property on the affected property owners.
Motion to set public hearing for September 4th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to set a public hearing for September 4th to consider special assessment for unpaid nuisances and general removal charges. Discussion. Councilmember Meskey.
This is probably relevant to the last one as well, but describe the process by which someone gets on these lists. Are we still complaint-based, or on this one, is it different?
Ms. Thompson.
For the removal of property, let me just grab my thing here. We received this notice, it comes from Finance Department. If the people, and originally from Community Development or Planning and Development, I should say, these buildings were declared hazardous, so I'll probably turn it over to Bruce.
Mr. Peterson.
These properties are viewed by staff, determined to be hazardous. We issue orders to the owners of the property to repair or remove. Typically, they do not take the necessary action, and these particular cases, which are not common, the cities had to step in and actually do the removals, do the cleanups, and then we build them out. They've not paid, so they need to be assessed as special assessments.
I understand all that, but I'm wondering, does staff actually go out and find these properties, or do you get typically calls from residents about the properties?
Typically calls, typically complaints. Some of them are staff-generated. If we see an obvious violation, we have to pursue it.
Okay. Council gave direction a number of years ago to be more proactive on staff's part. Before, it used to be all on a complaint basis, but that has changed. I believe that changed, somebody helped me with the time, probably three years ago. Councilmember Johnson brought it up at the time, and he wanted us to be more proactive. I believe it was the first year I was mayor, I think, and it was discussed and staff was directed to be doing it on a more proactive basis. So I think that's what's happening. Is that about right, Bruce?
Yep.
Sorry, Mr. Peterson. Okay. Motion, Councilmember Nelson.
I don't know that this is the right time to have that discussion, and I know where Councilmember Meskey is going, because I asked him if he'd be willing to take a drive with me in Ward 4. I spent some time driving around, and there are an awful lot of properties that have violations that I believe are violations, but I have a concern about neighbors having to complain about neighbors. And so in talking with Councilmember Meskey, we had a conversation about whether we needed to empower staff, or whether we needed to do a community-wide cleanup, mowing, vehicles parked, those types of things. And so I just expressed that as a concern, that I think that we would be well-served to pick up the pace on the nuisance things and to help neighbors be neighborly and not have to complain on their neighbors. And so I don't know how that necessarily works. I know that Mankato, which is bigger, uses a, is it a 511, I believe, system where people can register a complaint, councilmembers get notified, staff follow up with what the protocol's gonna be and what needs to happen next, and it has not become a, I need to complain on my neighbor routine. So I, I think that's a concern on, on both, what I've seen, both residential and commercial properties, so.
Councilmember Meskey.
Well, that's precisely where I was going. I've never liked this in my short tenure, is I've had to deal with many neighbors that don't want to directly tell on their neighbors, so I have served as a conduit to direct that. I do appreciate hearing that we're trying to do more of this proactively. I think that's great. But if there could be a system in place where people could do that through an automated system, and it sounds like there are some cities that have something in place like that, I would love to explore that. I don't mean to hold up on this particular item, but it just seemed like an appropriate time to bring it up. I really don't like having neighbors have to tell on neighbors about their grass being cut, or possibly parking in the, in their yard. It just doesn't feel right to me if it's a violation and we see it. I'm glad to hear that if staff sees one of these buildings that we address it that way, but there, there should be a better system that we could look at, but for now, I will work with the system we have, but I would love to see it improved.
Yeah, the city does have a reporter problem, so it can be done, you don't have to identify who you are, you just have to report it. You remember when we talked about this last year? That's when we found out that we had the wrong phone number listed, so when you called the phone number, it didn't go anyplace. You know, I'd been asking that question for two years to make sure that that was correct, and it wasn't until Ms. Thompson said that phone number doesn't go anyplace. So we got that corrected, so I believe that was done about a year ago. So hopefully now, when people are calling, because I got the calls from people saying I tried calling the phone number and nobody answered. Well, the reason nobody answered is because it went no place. We have the incorrect phone number written down. Mr. Peterson.
Just to follow up a little bit on some of the concerns, staff issues probably 20 to 25 citations a week that we will send out letters. We do, I'm gonna guess, 800 to 1,000 a year, and when I first started here, we had one the first year. One. That's how things have changed. Staff spends a lot of time out in the field, and they are, they don't spend a lot of time out there specifically looking for the zoning violations because they're out doing other things. They will write them down if they note them, the inspectors, the zoning administrator, Sarah, they all do. There's really a limit from a staff standpoint, how much time we can spend in the field dealing with these things, and it's worked very well for people to call up. As soon as we get a complaint, we follow up. If we get any, an email from a councilperson, we follow up that same day. It's worked pretty well. I'm not really sure how much the system needs to change. If, if people are reluctant to even call us, that's one thing, but we don't require any identification, because we're not, we don't send out any correspondence to a property owner just based on what a phone call says. We verify it in the field, and we don't always have the ability to get access to the backs of properties. That's where a lot of violations occur. Once we get the notification or the complaint, then we'll go out and we'll access the back of that property. But if we're just driving the streets, doing our regular business, we're not catching all of these.
And let me make sure that I'm very clear, that I am not criticizing that staff is somehow neglectful in doing their job at all, but if you're doing 800 to 1,000, I know that I've, I've filed on my own 15 on behalf of people, too. So I mean, whatever, I think the system could just be better. How that is, I don't know, and I, hopefully, we can, we can work together. I don't know if it has to have a major shift, and maybe it's just that people don't like to tell on their neighbors, and, but I mean, I've done, I know that every time I've done it, they were, they've been followed up very, very quickly. It is usually the first day I'll hear back, so on that regard, staff has done what, what they need to do. I just don't know if the reporting system we have is working as well as it could be.
We have had a lag recently, simply because we've got a new inspector that's been getting up to speed, and once he's up to speed, we will expect that he will bring a lot more violations into the office than he has been able to the last couple of months. So I will admit that it probably has tailed off the months of June and July into August.
Councilmember Nelson.
Councilmember Meskey and I also had this, that we realized it takes staff to do this, and wondered if we could empower Public Works to even just take a day, mow lawn one day later or something, and just take a day to canvas the community, to help out with some of the things with that. So I am sensitive to the, you know, the fact that it does take staff, but I was gonna start to write down addresses, and I, I did not do that because there were more addresses than, and to take photos. And so I hope that, that we can help empower our community with some of the nuisance things here that we're experiencing.
Okay, getting back to the motion. The motion is to set a public hearing on unpaid nuisance and general removal charges. Additional discussion. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is consideration of an introduction to transfer city-owned property. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, once again, the city has an opportunity to sell some city-owned property, though you're not gonna get rich off this one. This is a dollar. It's a proposed sale to the state of Minnesota of a remnant parcel off Transportation Drive where the state wishes to build their 16-bed, community-based adolescent mental health facility. It's a remnant parcel because of the curve in Transportation Drive. It just sliced a corner off the property, probably almost to less than 1,000 square feet of property. So it's a recommendation of staff that the council introduce the ordinance for the sale of the property to be conducted at the September 4th meeting.
Motion to set public hearing for September 4th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to set a public hearing for September 4th to consider an introduction of an ordinance to transfer city-owned property to MinDOT. Discussion. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Next, you're still up. Consideration of an introduction of ordinance amendment to rezone from ag to R4 medium-density multifamily residential. Mr. Peterson.
Wilmer Redevelopment Company LLC, which is the company that owns the East Mobile Home Park, has a purchase agreement on the adjacent 60 acres. They are proposing, they have a, in their purchase agreement, it's contingent upon the rezoning, so they have proposed rezoning that acreage from agriculture to R4 medium-density multifamily to accommodate the expansion of the Mobile Home Park. The Planning Commission has considered this, and it's, these recommendations are somewhat premised on the council keeping an open mind to rezone some of this property to the east in the future, again, for possible industrial purposes. That would be some compatible uses to the Midwest campus. So that being said, it's a recommendation of staff that the council set the public hearing on this ordinance for September 4th.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to introduce an ordinance to amend, amendment to rezone from agriculture to medium-density multifamily residential. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson. I thought I seen you raise your hand.
I pushed my glasses up, sorry.
I'll push your glasses up. Councilmember Christensen.
What'd I do?
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it the entire 60 acres there, Bruce?
That's what's being proposed right now, because that's what he wants to purchase.
Okay, so what you're talking about is the east end of that, or property further east for industrial expansion?
It would be the furthest east of this 60 acres, the stuff that's up against the RE co-op property and the railroad tracks on the east side.
Okay, so it would be part of that 60 acres, I'm just saying?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you meant beyond that to the east.
No, no, it would be shaved off this 60 sometime in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Because we've been dealing with a potential project out there as well that wants that rail access.
Okay.
Additional discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next is consideration of an ordinance replacing ordinance number 2.023, known as the subdivision ordinance. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, for most of this year, staff has been working to redraft the city's subdivision ordinance. The ordinance that we've used was adopted in 1964 and surprisingly has remained very relevant from a statutory and a procedural standpoint. We did think it was time to bring it up to speed and to make some amendments and additions to it. So staff and the Planning Commission have worked to prepare the draft that's now ready for public hearing. It's a recommendation of staff that the public hearing to consider the ordinance be held on September 4th. At that meeting, Sarah Anderson, who at that time will be Sarah Swedberg, will appear before the council and walk you through the changes to the ordinance, as Sarah's done a wonderful job of being the principal draft person for this, for this ordinance, so.
Council? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the introduction of an ordinance to replace ordinance number 2.023, known as the subdivision ordinance. Public hearing will be held on September 4th at 7:05 PM. Discussion. Motion, Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will we have the copy of that and all the changes made prior to the meeting, then?
The ordinance is in your packet right now.
I know, but I don't see any changes in it.
That's because it's all new, basically. It's all reformatted. We, we didn't have an electronic copy to go through and do the edits. Like I said, this is a 54-year-old ordinance, and...
Okay, so the entire thing is new?
We started from scratch. So, the new ordinance repeals the old ordinance in its entirety.
Okay, but there must be some changes in there because of the, this is the 21st century versus the 20th.
Yeah. If you want that in advance, I'll ask Sarah to prepare something. Otherwise, she was prepared to walk through that at the hearing for the council. And what we did in this process also is we, we invited developers and surveyors to come to the planning commission and work with us and review this language ahead of time and make sure that everybody understood the procedures and agreed that they were workable and a lot, we got a lot of help from the surveyors in town.
Okay. She'll be here and explain the changes in, because it's a long read.
She will, she'll walk, she'll walk through it. It's, you should read it. It's act, it's actually good reading.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mr. Peterson, maybe what we could do is simply have her photocopy that out of the ordinance book and then have that attached, scanned and attached. I think that might be helpful.
Okay, so, you want the old one scanned in the packet as well? Not a problem.
Please. Councilmember Plowman.
Oh, not a huge deal. I was just gonna mention that I, I did hear the topic being discussed on the radio. And I think, I think when she's here to discuss it, she'll know the substantive changes kinda right off the top of her head. And so, I think we'll have our questions answered right there.
Thank you. Additional questions? Hold for favor of the motion to set the public hearing for September 4th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Mr. Grothehaus, I see you entered the building. Your, it has been approved. You can speak with Mr. Peterson. But we approved it under consent and so, your ag lease was approved. So, thank you. You can stick around and watch the rest of our activities if you choose, but just wanted to point that out so you didn't have to spend the rest of the night in case you wanted to leave. So, but if you have questions, see Mr. Peterson. Next is a consideration of curling center lease agreement with Glacial Ridge Curling. Mr. Scott, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council. Before you is the draft build-to-suit lease agreement with Glacial Ridge Curling. This was considered by the council at work session two weeks ago. This agreement has not changed since it was presented two weeks ago and Glacial Ridge Curling has executed the agreement. The agreement is extensive. It covers the fundraising and donation requirements to fund the construction of a new dedicated curling facility on the grounds of the current civic center. It covers the process through which that facility will be designed by the city in consultation and approval with Glacial Ridge Curling. It establishes a procedure through which the parties have to agree on the final design before putting the project out to bid and requires both parties to approve of the lowest responsible bid before the city is required to award a contract to a general contractor to construct the facility. After the facility is constructed, this agreement provides the terms through which the city will enter into a lease of that facility to Glacial Ridge Curling. The lease would be for a term of 25 years for nominal rent. There would be an option for Glacial Ridge to renew that agreement for up to three, five-year terms. So, we're talking about from the date construction finishes, a potentially 40-year agreement before you tonight. Glacial Ridge Curling would have nearly exclusive possession of the facility during the curling season, which is the cold weather months. The city would have possession of the facility and be able to use it for dry floor events in the warm months. As part of the lease terms, there are certain requirements for Glacial Ridge to provide public programming. I believe it's five hours a week must be devoted to public programming, whether that's open curling, lessons, youth programming, or the like. It also must make the facility available for the city's use at no charge to the city at any points at which they have not already booked the facility. And there's a responsibility on both parties to work cooperatively in coordinating schedules. During the lease term, during the curling season, Glacial Ridge Curling would be responsible for the operation and maintenance expenses at the facility, with the exception of the fact that the city would be responsible for maintaining the curling, excuse me, the ice plant that would be part of the facility. A word on just the financing and how this would work sequentially. Before, the city would be required to undertake any work on the design, the initial donation that would be required to be made of, by Glacial Ridge Curling to the city, of 60% of the total estimated project cost. At this time, the estimate of the project cost is $2.3 million, meaning before the city would have to take any steps towards the design of this facility, they would have received 60% of that estimated cost upfront. Thereafter, the parties would have to agree to the timing of the remainder, of the donation of the remaining balance, which would have to be made before any bonds issued by the city to fund the remaining approximately 40% of the facility costs would come due. So, all bond payments would be made out of the proceeds from the second donation. The schedule for that second donation, or the dates on which that second donation would be made, would have to be agreed by the parties and attached to this agreement as an exhibit before the city would award a contract to a general contractor. The city is agreeing as part of this agreement to fund $15,500 in utility connections to the new facility. In addition, to the extent the city is going to end up requesting any items to be included in the final design of this facility, above and beyond certain minimum components of the facility that have been set forth in this agreement, the city would be responsible for paying for those costs added at its request. Otherwise, this cost, this project will be funded under the terms of this agreement by Glacial Ridge Curling. To the extent the project is more expensive than currently anticipated, again, it would be broken down simply that if the added expenses are the result of something specifically requested by the city, the city would be responsible for it. Otherwise, it would be a Glacial Ridge Curling responsibility. Of course, under this agreement, if at any time Glacial Ridge Curling were to default in its obligations, the city would have the right to terminate the lease. There are various points along the way where if the project has not proceeded to both parties' satisfaction, Glacial Ridge Curling would have the ability to terminate, as would the city, would have the ability to terminate the contract. Those junctures would be during the final design. If the party simply can't come to an agreement on what to include in the design to be put out for bid, there's a negotiation period that would be triggered. But if at the end of that, the parties could not reach an agreement, either party could terminate the agreement and the remaining balance of any funds that had been donated and which had not already been obligated would be returned to Glacial Ridge Curling at that time. Similarly, if the parties can't agree that the amount of the lowest responsible bid on the project is acceptable and are unable after a period of negotiation to work on and agree to revisions to the final design to try and bring that number down, either party would have the right to terminate the agreement at that time. And again, any unobligated donated funds would be returned to the curling club at that time. I believe that summarizes what's in the agreement before you. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Council.
Motion to approve the build-to-suit lease as executed by the Glacial Ridge Curling and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Was made and seconded to approve the curling center lease agreement of Glacial Ridge Curling as described by the city attorney. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is for our city engineer, Sean. Did you know ahead of time that we were gonna maintain the ice-making machine that we, that you didn't design or recommend? It was by the, their committee?
Councilmember Christensen, mayor, members of the council. The original intent was that the curling facility, curling club would maintain that system that they specced. I know there was conversation that, well, if it's up at the, at a city building, the city needs to maintain it, which is about where the conversations kind of halted as far as who was going to maintain that facility. Because you're exactly right. If we're not specing it out, it's awful hard to maintain something that we don't know what's in it.
That you didn't recommend, in other words.
Correct.
Yeah. That's one concern of mine. And the other is, what are we gonna do with this facility for the five months that we have it? Thank you, Sean.
Mr. Holland, do you have an answer to that?
Well, I think we've had several conversations on that over the last year. I mean, for one thing, some of the additional space that we could use, I know that our civic center managers talked about that we've lost some expositions because we didn't have enough space, you know, some of the camping and so forth. And so, there's all kinds of different activities that can take place, just like with the blue line right now and, you know, the red line. So, I think that, you know, it will definitely be used by the city and by other people in the community and just like the, the events that we have now.
We have a proposed sales tax. Or not proposed, well, it is proposed to the voters this November and it's, I believe, around $30 million, which includes a lot of facility space. Aren't we just doubling up on it? I mean, my concern is, is the taxpayer's concern. What are we gonna do with this besides maintain it the five months that the city has it to pay the utilities and the janitor and, and now the ice-making machine? We're supposed to maintain that also. And I don't know what the life of the one that they proposed is. Replacing the entire system at the civic center, that's something I didn't know of. And I don't know if the council knew that we were supposed to maintain it. But what are we gonna do? I mean, I mean, it's easy to suggest that while we're short of space and we, we could have other, other events come there, but are there any currently scheduled for something like that if it comes? I don't think so. It's, it's a sealed scenario of if you build it, they will come. I know it'll come to Curl. There's no doubt about it. But this is taxpayer dollars we're talking about and taxpayer dollars to maintain it down the road. So, I have a major concern with that and with, unless somebody tells me that it's gonna definitely be used for something, I, I can't support this. I may be alone, but I...
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm hearing that this design is primarily for a curling center. So, I guess I'm, I'm looking at it mostly as, as that, as a curling facility and that the intent is that the Glacial Ridge Curling Club is going to raise the money for that. I do believe the, the point that's been raised about the maintaining of the refrigeration system, that's, that's a really good point. In listening to our legal counsel speak, it sounds as though there's quite a few firewalls built in when it comes to different phases of the project, including the design. And so, I assume, or I'll venture a guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but the refrigeration unit components, whatever, that's one kind of integral part of the design. So, if we, if our city engineering department or whatever noticed some problems that, that were concerning to us during the review of that design, specifically with regards to refrigeration, we could raise that concern then, correct? Before being in too deep, so to speak.
Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Plowman, that is correct. If, the city is the party that's responsible for the design of this facility under this agreement. Ultimately, it requires the agreement as well of the curling club. But the city would be retaining the architectural firm unless it agrees at some point in the future to accept donation of plans and specs that were prepared by the curling club. But that's to be determined. At this point, the way this agreement's drafted, the city has the full authority to retain a design professional of its choosing and require that it be designed to the city's specifications, as this will be a city-owned facility. And if I could just add, I think the reason, my, my understanding in drafting this, and this comes from back when we were putting the letter of intent together, was that the city preferred to be the party responsible for maintaining that system. Certainly, if that's not the view of staff, I guess we need to know that. But that's where this requirement started. It was in the letter of intent and just carried forward as we drafted this agreement.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Elverado.
Thank you for clarifying that. That's, it was my understanding that that was the city's requirement to be able to maintain the system. It was not the request of the curling club, at least at the point in time where I was involved with it. And so, if something's changed since then, I don't know. But I think staff had raised the question if they were responsible for it with that. So, it's the first that I heard that we had switched it, but I do believe it was the city's request to do that.
Councilmember Elverado, followed by Mesky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This might be a detailed thing and maybe it's built in, but we talked about 1.8 minimum components. I'm not seeing anything addressing restrooms. So, I think that's a big deal. So, take a look at that and I think we should think, think about that. The other thing, I'm, when we're designing this, Wilmer has a history of designing for right now. I hope we're thinking about mobile lights, cameras, so we can broadcast from this facility so people wanna come and use it for other things than curling. I can see excitement watching it on television locally on our rack, rack TV if we can broadcast from this facility. I'm hoping that we think more outside the box than just looking at it as a box. I think we have a great potential. If we have, sitting in my program and they wanna bring in dancers and my mom's doesn't wanna go out there, she can watch it on TV because we planned for it. So, we made that facility a modern, a multi-functional building. So, I think it's more than just going to be a curling club. Do I know what's gonna go in there? No, I don't know. But I, do I hear that Wilmer's growing and building new buildings and bringing in new jobs? Yeah. So, we gotta look outside the box. We gotta predict. And if I had a crystal ball, I'd, I'd be doing a lot of that. But we've gotta predict as to what we, we might need in that building. And I'm, I'm hoping it's mobile lighting. I'm hoping it's cameras for broadcasting. I wouldn't even mind if, if we consider some sort of broadcast, Bruce. Why? Because I think curling is gonna be that big. And I wanna be on that edge where, let's have an Olympic trial here. Let's bring them in here. Let's say, hey, ESPN, Fox, whoever, we're ready for you. We want you here. So, so I hope we're looking. I know we got a little bit, 2.3 million, but I wanna look, I wanna look big. I want you guys to think big. I believe in it. Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky.
Goodness, I should've went before you. I was just gonna say, I thought we had talked about before that having a bigger footprint would allow us to bring more conventions and other things here in addition to the civic center's footprint. So, that's all. So, yeah, I'm sorry. That was a whisper and a scream. I apologize.
Nothing was heard. Additional discussion? Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the comment. This council has and will in the future be requested due to a lot of things outside of the box, mostly concerning taxpayer money. We get requests, requests for TIF districts, tax abatement, and, and groups coming to us for financial aid for, while a curling facility. I'm beginning to think that everybody leans on government for money getting ahead by asking for abatement, TIF districts, or some financial assistance, or the infrastructure put in for a certain building. We gotta keep remembering that this is taxpayer dollars we're talking about, not just today's dollars, but down-the-road maintenance. And our country is broke. We're in the hole. And our city may be on that same path. That is my concern. We build a facility, it needs to have a use. And this five months that we're gonna have it, we're thinking, yeah, we're gonna be able to have more conventions and that here. Well, we got a lot of facilities in the world with the... Well, we've got a lot of facilities in the world that can handle conventions. We're talking about a new community center, some new buildings out at the Civic Center area. We're going to have maybe more than we can handle. And, you know, you have to think about that when you're making these decisions, folks. It's our duty to take care of the taxpayers' dollars. We're holding the purse strings, and it's so easy for someone to step up to this podium and say, you know, we should do this, and to convince eight people to do it, it's pretty simple. And it happens a lot, and I'm concerned about that. End of my comment.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another thought that had been tossed around was the idea of building new ice rink. The Curling Club, building their facility, reduces the pressure on the current ice demands and allows us to avoid having to build a new ice rink for $5 to $10 million. I think this is a great investment. And I'd just like to remind the listening public that it is private donations that are building this arena. The financial assistance we're giving is to provide the bonding that will be repaid by the Curling Club donations. And so I think this is a really great investment, and I'm proud of us for moving forward with it.
I would just like to also thank the Curling Club for sticking with us. Again, this is another two-year project that's been on the table, and you've went through different board presidents. Don, you're here now, you're the board president currently. And to stick with us and walk through this path, I know when Councilmember Anderson left the table, one of the things after the meeting he said to me is, I certainly wish we would have got that Curling Club through before I was done on the council. And so that gives you an idea how long this has been being talked about. And so you guys have come to us with plans, revised your plans, improved your plans. You know, we've met with CVB, we've met with people that want to use the space. So thank you for bringing that great project. And again, this is going to be donations from our community that are going to build this similar to the Destination Playground. And that was something that was on the tax doles for $200,000. That was all done with private donations. Here's another example. Councilmember Schwantes said, you know, in excess of $5 million to add a sheet of ice that's being potentially donated to us, so that there's not another $5 million in the back of the taxpayers. And so, you know, we have to look at the big picture. We can't just silo everything and just say no. And so I firmly support approving this. I think it's a good plan. And, you know, the local ops and sales tax hasn't passed. That's a process. We have, you know, like to say, a bird in hand is better than three in the bush. So with that, additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Nay.
Seven ayes, one nay.
That resolution passes. Next is consideration of Public Works pickup truck purchase. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In front of you in your packet, if you'll recall from a few meetings previously, we hired a project manager for the Public Works, specifically or mainly for parks projects, but additional projects as assigned, if you will. And it, part of that is him traveling to and from projects. There is not currently a vehicle out there for him to use dedicated to that purpose. And what this does is allows that for him. There is significant, or sufficient, I should say, funds left over from the purchases of two pickups we purchased earlier this year, that we purchased from Schweiders. Got a great deal on those, and there's some funds left over that actually would cover the purchase of this pickup. It is also from Schweiders.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
Second.
motion made, and second to approve the purchase of a Public Works pickup. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is consideration change order for wastewater treatment maintenance facility parking lot overlay. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, in front of you in your packet is, if you'll recall, the old wastewater treatment plant overlay. We overlaid that lot this year. The bids came in less than budgeted. This is a significantly, relatively small change order, $5,800 and change. Because of the additional irregularities in the parking lot, we had a little bit of additional mix. And so the request is to approve the change order and reappropriate those funds, $5,823.84 from the fats, oils, and grease pad project that is under budget for this overlay project and change order.
Mr. Mayor, I move. That's a recommendation.
Second. Motion made, and second to approve recommendation to change order for wastewater treatment maintenance facility lot overlay. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next is consideration of interview committee selection for recreation director position. Mr. Holland.
Mayor and council, tonight I have another recommendation for a position of the Recreation Department Director. This person was selected over 30 applicants, and with that, we had an interview team of four individuals, including Councilman Fagerly, myself, our Public Works Director, and our HR Director. We conducted these four interviews, and based upon these four interviews, there was consensus of the number-one person to be selected, and that was our current employer, our employee, and our Civic Center Manager, Rob Baumgarn. Rob has over 17 years of recreation experience. He's been in our Civic Center for over three years. He's worked for me personally for the last 15 months and shown great professionalism and accomplishments. I was just out at the Civic Center this last week on Friday. More improvements to the blue line and to the red line sides of the building. The improvements just keep going on and on every last two summers. He also has a bachelor's degree in science and sports and recreational management. I think that this is a very key position, just like I talked about with Britta earlier. It's somebody that I'm going to work closely with. It's something that I get excited about. It's something that gets you enthusiastic when you talk about change. And as I've talked to the staff, we're not trying to replace what happened. We're going to make it better. And that's my goal. And so with that, I would ask for approval of Rob Baumgarn, because it does take council approval for department heads' positions.
That motion. Second. Motion made, and second, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I prefer to honor the work that's done by the committee, but I feel unable to do that in this instance. I believe that this is a critical position, and given all the history that has taken place with that department, we really need to have a strong skill set that's able to take this to a different place. And I mean no disrespect, but I can't support this particular nomination.
Councilmember Fagerly.
As the administrator said, I sat in on the interviews. We were giving four names, and we interviewed all four. And this candidate was number one on all four of our ballots. He's working for the city now. He can jump right in and should be a smooth transition, and he's going to improve it. And he also stated that he would like to continue to have the Civic Center position too, so we can save some money for the current time without hiring a person out there. This is a new position. I'm sure he'll be on probation, so we'll find out if he likes it or not. I have 100% confidence in the gentleman, so.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Maskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
No.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
No.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays.
Resolution, that motion passes. Next is consideration of use of city equipment for community events policy. Mr. Scott.
Thank you again, Mayor, members of the council. Before you, as a policy, I would ask you prepare that formalizes an existing practice of the city in making certain city-owned equipment available to private organizations who conduct community events primarily within the city. This policy specifies certain equipment, but gives the city administrator discretion to designate additional equipment that can be used essentially at no cost, although there's a deposit requirement that we'll talk about. But the equipment includes the city's Showmobile, which is a portable stage, picnic tables, bleachers, barricades, tables, and chairs, and again, such other equipment as the city administrator may designate as available for use at community events. In general, there's some guidelines here, which is that they cannot be used for private events, which are events that are not open to the general public. The city-owned equipment generally may not be taken outside the city's municipal boundaries, although there is discretion for the administrator to make exceptions to that requirement. There is an application form that is appended to the policy that must be submitted to the city at least 30 days before the event. And I should note on that form that I have updated it since the version went into your packet to include certain information suggested by Councilmember Alvarado following the last work session, to include the applicant's work position, email, and work and cell phone numbers, just some additional information to make sure we have all the right contact information for the individual or individuals requesting city equipment. There is a deposit requirement. The default amount is $200 per item of equipment requested. But again, the city administrator, consistent with direction at the work session, has discretion to alter that amount depending on the nature of the request. There is a, I think, general assumption that if not otherwise arranged, the equipment will be dropped off at the location of the event and picked up by the city. There again is a $25 default delivery or pickup fee per item of equipment, which may be altered again in the discretion of the city administrator. The deposit would be returned upon the return of the used equipment in good condition, to the extent the equipment suffers damage while it's under private use that would be paid for, in theory, from the deposit. Are there any questions? I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, the recommendation is that the council approves this policy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made, and second to approve the use of city equipment policy for community events. Discussion. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like the idea that we have consistency across the board, that anybody can now come to the city and find out what the terms are to use our equipment for public use. So I'm very pleased to see this. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you. Did we feel like we needed to clean up the $25 per item fee? At one point in your explanation, you said it would be free. But there is a, on page one, well, page two or 177 of our packet, it says that there would be a delivery fee per item. Do we need to clean that up at all, or clarify that?
I believe as it's drafted, Councilmember Osmus, it would be kind of a default, would be, it's $25 per item picked up or delivered. If the nature of this is that someone has requested a table and six chairs, the city administrator would have discretion to alter that amount and say, under the circumstances, given the nature of the request, it's $25 for everything. Or, you know, as the administrator sees fit, he can exercise his judgment.
Okay, so there is going to be, is it a fee to rent, or is it the fee for delivery?
It is not technically a rental fee. It would be a delivery or pickup fee.
Okay.
And what's talked about in the work session is that if you're renting, you know, seven tables and 14 chairs, it's not $25 per item.
Right.
And that's why we put it into that the administrator had the discretion at the work session. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is introduction of Parkland sale letter of intent. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor, all the members of the council, as we discuss at the work session, the city has a letter of intent from a real estate company that's representing the ultimate tenant for the purchase of 18.6 acres in the industrial park. The letter of intent is a pretty standard letter of intent. It's been reviewed by the city attorney. The letter of intent was in the amount of $1,1,880. And again, they did request that the city apply the city's write-down policy. And again, the city attorney has recommended that several changes be made to the letter of intent, and these would be made before we would have the administrator execute that letter of intent. The changes are, one, clarify that the environmental inspection reports, title commitment and survey are at the buyer's expense. Two, specify that the city's purchase agreement form will be used, not the buyer's. Three, change a conveyance instrument from a warranty deed to a quitclaim deed. That's consistent with the way the city always sells property. Number four, clarify that all closing costs are the seller's responsibility as per the city's write-down policy. And number five, insert a caveat in the confidentiality clause acknowledging that the city is subject to the requirements of the Data Practices Act and the Open Meeting Law. So I would ask that the council agree with the purpose and intent of this letter of intent, and that they approve it with these changes and authorize the city administrator to execute the letter on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, and second to approve a letter of intent for industrial land park sale. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Am I correct that once, or say, we do take this step, if the council votes to accept the letter and execute it, do we learn, at what point in the stage in the process do we learn more about the proposed, a proposed development? When does that come?
Well, we will, they'll be doing their due diligence over the next few months, site exploration, soil borings, and I would think that at the time they execute a purchase agreement, we would know at that point. I can tell you, it's a small packaging and distribution firm. It's, they haven't released the name, but you've heard of it. It's not going to be a secret. They're a big player. And, you know, I can tell you, they're going to be running many loads of product a day in and out of this property. And one of the caveats, or one of their conditions, was that the- And one of the caveats, or one of their conditions, was that the city and county put stoplights at Wilmer Avenue and County Road 5. And this had, this had been anticipated. Doolies had requested that as well. We need one good intersection to get in and out of that side of the industrial park, and we've agreed that that's the location that makes the most sense. So that will be in the 2019 budget. They want those stop sign, or the stoplights built before spring of 2020, which is what they project for an opening. So the short answer to your question is, I don't know when you'll know exactly who the company is, but I think there'll be enough information that comes out in the interim, and perhaps as the letter of intent is accepted, they may even come back and be willing to offer the name of the company. And as soon as I have it formally, I'll share that with the council.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, the reasoning for my question isn't so much interest in the name, but just to be able to gauge the potential economic impact over the long term. And when we, when we're able to do that, then we're also able to have a better discussion about, you know, if there's differing opinions about land write-down and whatnot, we can have more information to work with in exchange. Like I said, we can know what the economic impact is going to be in exchange for what's being asked of the city.
I don't think there's any question that the average compensation for these jobs will definitely exceed the standards, the requirements for the land write-down for all phases of the positions that are going to exist out there. Just to give you an idea, they're asking, they're going to build 100,000 square feet, 36-foot sidewall, $25 to the facility. They move a lot of product and they employ a lot of people. Some of the people are employees, some are contractors.
Well, I'm supportive of industrial park expansion, and this is the first step, and as of right now, it's very, very exciting.
And the council always has the option. Obviously, you can't change it midstream of a project, but if you see a project go through and you want to tweak the land write-down policy, you're certainly free to do that. You know, if there's something that needs to be changed, we can do that.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When will we know what the write-down amount will be?
As soon as they are able to provide me with some information about employee projections. We look at three-year employee projections, and I need to find out how many of those are currently in town and how many are new. So there'll just be a little math involved, and I think we're probably a while out on that. It'll, that'll be part of the due diligence process here. We're not looking to construct till next spring, so.
You'll bring it back to us, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You'll have that whole breakdown, because this is just a letter of intent. It's not the purchase agreement. When we do the purchase agreement, you'll have all that information.
And then in order to sell property, we have to have an ordinance in the public area?
Yes, we'll have to adopt an ordinance at that time as well. Yes.
And so, again, to Councilmember Plowman's statement, and we're figuring that these are head of household jobs.
I think most of them will be, yes.
Again, as I said in the work session, thank you for bringing this project. You know, this is a project that's been in the works for well over two years. And thank you for, number one, responding to the blind inquiry of, you know, are we interested in the project? And then for Wilmer to be selected for this project, you know, these are good things. These are, this is what economic development is about, so thank you for your work.
Welcome.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is TIF, project for 15th Street Flats. Resolution with the roll call.
Yes, this is the development agreement to finalize the tax increment financing portion of that project. Under this agreement, the city agrees to execute a tax increment note in the amount of approximately $526,000 at such time as the developer provides invoices demonstrating that all those costs have been incurred and paid. And then the city enters into an obligation to reimburse the developer, not more than the amount of that note, based on the tax increments that are generated over the next 15 years. If the tax increments are not there to pay off the note, the developer does not receive the full note payment. So it's a recommendation of staff that the council enter into the, or adopt the resolution approving the development agreement and authorizing the mayor and administrator to execute the documents.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded to approve the TIF for 15th Street Flats. Discussion. And again, what was talked about in work session, there's four units set aside for people that are currently homeless to transition out of homelessness.
Yep.
And so that's a nice project to bring people that are less advantaged, to give them housing so they're not living on the street, correct?
Yeah, it really provides a full range of housing from that all the way up to market-rate workforce and a really nice mix of units. Some of the apartments are actually two-story units inside the building, so that's something a little unique to this market, and I think it'll be well-accepted.
Certainly. And then the biggest units there are three bedrooms, right?
Yes, that's correct. Three bedroom.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
No.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
That resolution passes. Next is sale of property. So to, the city owns two pieces of property on the west side of town, and we went into closed session two weeks ago to talk about selling that, so could you brief the public on what we are looking to do here, and then the steps that you're asking us to do tonight?
Sure, and I would ask the city attorney to chime in as well and talk about the timing for the information to become public, because I believe he's got some information to share with the council there as well. The city has been asked by a local company, a local contractor, Dunick, Inc., to enter into a purchase agreement for the property. They asked for two options. One, that it be an exclusive purchase agreement, which we cannot do because we have to make it available to any of the contractors. Secondly, they've agreed to a non-exclusive purchase agreement in the amount of nine hun, I'm sorry, $719,501, I believe it is, for the sale of the 140 acres. And it's about, after you net out the right-of-way that's going to be taken out of there, I think it's somewhere closer to 120, 115 acres. So they've agreed to purchase it at that amount. They've agreed to the condition that the purchase agreement is contingent, the execution of the agreement would be contingent upon them being the low bidder on the Y project. And the two parcels are the 80 acres west of County Road 55 and the 60 acres south of Highway 40 that were originally purchased for clear zone for the old airport. And that's been deemed to be surplus property. So I would like to ask that the council approve the purchase agreement, and again, it will be subject to city attorney final review, and that the mayor and administrator be authorized to execute that document.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, Mr. Scott.
Just to clarify, under the open meeting law and the Data Practices Act, the purchase agreement, once entered into, will be a public document. And already, based on the information Bruce has provided, and which has been incorporated into the motion, you satisfied the requirements to approve the purchase agreement in an open meeting.
Okay. Do we have to identify the parcel numbers? Parcel numbers were identified when we went into closed session, but I was anticipating that you would have those parcel numbers.
I can read them. I have them in the purchase agreement right here.
Okay.
Parcel number is 95-918-0010 and 95-920-0035.
Okay. Councilmember Mesky.
Just wondering if you could also add, and these weren't, there's a lot of wetland involved, and there were some wetland acreages. Can you maybe lay out?
Yes. Um, yeah, there is some delineated wetlands included in both of these parcels. There's a lot more in the 60-acre tract than there is in the 80-acre tract. So that really reduces the value to the company, and it reduces the value to any buyer. And what we started out was a little bit higher value based on an appraisal for egg purposes that had not netted out the wetland acreage. And so, working backwards, but using the appraisal as the base point as required, we've come up with the purchase price, which I think is a very fair price for those two properties.
Additional discussions. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just clarification, if this buyer does not get the bid from the state, they're not buying this property.
That's absolutely correct. They will not close with them unless they get the bid.
And the other two contractors, they have the option of buying it.
If they contact, yes, if they contact the city, we would make it available to them as well.
So it's only contingent if they get the state bid?
That's right.
All right.
Are we ready to vote? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is the 2018 salary and benefit changes. This is being brought forward to us. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. This is being brought to us by staff, and it is required to, we talked about this in work session, but in order to make those budget adjustments and staff salary adjustments, we need the resolution approved. Mr. Okens.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you stated earlier this evening at work session, we discussed recommended salary and benefit budgetary changes due to collective bargaining agreement settlements. This has no, has zero effect as far as the no increase on the current year operating budget is only reallocating dollars that had been budgeted due to contracts that had not been finalized when the budget process took place. Before you, again, it was a resolution making those changes, basically allocating dollars to the various departments, and secondly, reducing the state aid, PRA, due to Charis Health purchase, or lease.
Motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passed. Next is a consideration for a resolution for Robins Island concessionaire for providing paddle boats, paddle boards, kayaks, and some associated food products for use at Robins Island. Mr. Christensen.
Mayor, members of the council, as you stated, the resolution in front of you, or the proposed resolution in front of you, would be to allow concessionaires non-exclusive lease and license to, on, on facility, public facilities, to, as a concessionaire, to sell or rent kayaks, paddle boards, and similar, along with the prepackaged food items. And I can give you, do I need to give, Mr. Scott, do I need to give names, and how does that all work at this point? Yeah, I would recommend you identify the party that would be entering into the license agreement, and address the term the agreement would last. Okay. The entity involved in the license agreement is titled The Wild Oar, O-A-R. They have a, they've provided a summary of a business plan. The license term would be through November 1, May 1 to November 1. So that gives them two months at this point, if things progress as, as we're talking about.
Thought we were going to extend that out to next year.
No.
No?
Okay. Go ahead. So the terms of the agreement would be through November 1, or up for discussion, obviously, of 2018, and the entity involved is The Wild Oar. I think we should probably still discuss, also in the agreement, a rental fee. The fact that this year is a very short year, we can have a relatively, I would recommend a relatively nominal fee at this point.
Councilor, you wish to do?
I just ask for clarification.
Sure.
In the work session, we discussed it about establishing a policy to allow this to do this. What we're actually doing now is just recommending this person be brought forward, so I might have misspoke whether we were doing one year or two year. I thought we were establishing a general policy so other people could apply also, and that we were just acknowledging that this person, through staff, previous staff, had been promised this, and that we were going to honor that this year or whatever. So I'm confused with what we're trying to accomplish here.
I think we're.
Let me clarify myself. When we introduced this, I, my recommendation was is that we allow it for the rest of this year and next year to be given to this concessionaire, allowing staff the time to develop the policy, come back, and then make that an open process. That was what my intent was when I brought it up during work session. If council wishes to do something else, that is certainly fine. Councilmember Osmus.
I did hear that that was your intent, and I thought we would have more discussion when this got brought up here. My thought was because of the, if you want to call it miscommunication, to this concessionaire, that this year they would be allowed to have the contract or the bid. But I do think that there's plenty of time to open it up to be, what we talked about, being fair and equitable for next year. They have all winter to work on the proposal and the, and the policy, to have it open for bids for next year. But I am in favor of getting it up and running and getting a taste of it out there for the remainder of this year. So I do think this will expedite that.
And to be clear, if I may, my intent initially was, and it's right in there in the circumstances, is to be a non-exclusive at this point. And so if we want to open it up for bids, if it gets too busy in the future, I think that's perfectly within our rights if we, if we do it this way. At this point, I don't know that we even need to open it up for bids. We've not had enough interest. If we get too much interest, then yeah, I think that's well within our rights to do that.
I just think, given the timeframe, I don't think there's time for bids and everything else. And they're in a position to roll with it. And again, because of a promise that I think we, we can fulfill for this year.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just clarify me for, clarify for me one more time. So you're saying you want to do this, but it's not exclusive? So if someone else chose to do that, we would recognize that and allow that if the same contracting kind of thing was done? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm saying we don't have to bid it. I'm saying we could, there's nothing saying we couldn't have competitive vendors out there.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not sure that that's a problem at this point.
Hey, I would like to get a motion on.
Move to approve.
We're getting down on the weeds here. I'd like to get a motion before we continue.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, Councilmember Nelson.
Please state what the motion is.
To approve the recommendation to, for this contract with, forgive me, I don't know the name, something or.
Wild Oar.
Wild Oar, for the remainder of this year through November. I think that's what the recommendation was.
And next year, wasn't it?
Well, that, that was.
No.
No, I brought that up, but that is being defeated, so I'm fine with that. I'm just, I'm trying to move it forward is what I'm trying to do.
I mean, I think it's important to let them start doing what they want to do and see how it works. And it's not exclusive, it could go into next year, it really doesn't matter. Because if more come on board, they want to sell other things there, we can enter in those agreements as well.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'm comfortable with that, just knowing that there have been other people who've asked about this. So I think this is a way to try to work through the situation that we're in right now and see what we can do next year for the benefit of our community.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think there's going to be a lot of people out there that are going to be wanting to do this. This is, whoever this person is, is taking a giant leap here. It's a risk to go into any business, folks. But I want to make sure it's clear that they're going to rent kayaks and paddle boards, not sell them.
Correct.
But sell prepackaged food and beverages.
That's correct.
Chips and pop or whatever. And the liability insurance is totally on this person or did it fall under our umbrella?
Them. It's on the, it's on the business.
On the business.
Correct.
Okay. But if something went awry out there, would be, we be on the hook for anything?
On city land.
Probably not. I mean, it's all in that agreement that we worked out with through.
Probably not, I mean, it's all in that agreement that we worked out with through.
Well, the city attorney answered that one.
Yep. In the license agreement, excuse me, Mayor, council, in the license agreement, as in all license agreements we prepare, the vendor is required to have insurance, and to identify the city for any claims resulting from his activities out there, as long as the city ensures that they have the insurance, and verifies the certificates of insurance are valid, you should be covered under this agreement.
So, the city is named in their policy?
We would have to, we would be an additional insured under their policy, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this party is going to sign a contract and provide insurance?
Correct.
Okay. What about, there's a couple of parties in town that have ice cream trucks, can they just drive out there and park them?
We're working on that policy separately.
That's separate?
Okay. You will see that very soon.
All right. That's all I need to know, thanks.
And I think that, that, I mean, we're starting to peel back the onion here, and, you know, like I said during work session, all this is getting dumped on Sean, and, you know, the thing we have to remember is that he was overworked already, because, you know, he's short in his staff, you know, and he's down two people in his staff.
He's got a project manager now.
Yeah, but I do. I mean, you know, but I mean, we're continuing to pour stuff on him, and he's finding these things that have to be resolved, and so, the reason that Mr. Holland and I talked about that this afternoon, and tried to get it through tonight, is that, that's one thing he can take off his list, to move to the next fire that's burning under his feet or halfway up, so.
Well, he can take it off the list for now, but next year, it's going to be different, because Rockin' Robins have Robins Island, and they charge the people there, so you're going to have this person come out there too, and not pay Rockin' Robins, but yet, collect?
We just hired a rec director, and I'm assuming that that will be under his, his purview. Is that correct?
I'm assuming that as well.
I'm guessing he's going to have a hotline to the city attorney. Just some discussion on the, on the motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may.
Resolution.
One of the, the comments that Mr. Mesky made was through November, this states to November 1st, so I, I don't care, but I think we should make that clear, which one we want.
November 1st.
Okay.
That's fine.
You okay with that, Mr. Scott?
Yeah, I am, the one lingering question I have, is in the license agreement I prepared, I just had a blank for the license fee to be charged. As Sean pointed out, this is a short-term license at this point, I don't know if you want to provide any direction to staff on what that should be.
I think mutually agreed upon is what I'd recommend. And with, the other part that, that the rest of the council doesn't know, but I know, because I met with the person this afternoon, is they threw out $600 worth of food last year, because this didn't get approved, so I think they've already paid a fee, it's just been indirect, so, but we'll leave that up to staff to determine if they want to fee them for this year. But the new policy that would come forward, would have a fee established. Would be my understanding, is that correct? Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is city administrator comments, Mr. Holland.
First of all, Mayor and council, I want to thank you for passing the consideration of use of city equipment for community events. As I stated earlier in the meeting, there was a couple of things that I noticed when I got here, and this was one of those policies, and so, I appreciate you doing that. It's something that's, it is a living document, and then we'll probably have to look at it every couple of years, but my primary concern was not to restrict people, but to protect people, to protect nonprofits, and to protect the city at the same time, and finally, to make sure that people, when they have an obligation to take care of something, and they have their own money, or their own name on the line, they tend to take better care of it, and so, these things like this portable stage are worth six figures plus, and we've got to make sure that those people take responsibility for the usage, so thank you for that. Also, I want to thank the curlers, I know they've already left, but I want to thank them for their patience and cooperation, and for Brandon, their attorney, who spent numerous hours making this contract, and I also want to thank our own city attorney, Robert, for all the patience he had, believe me, sometimes it was trying to get all the parties to agree to the terms, and I think we wore out his most, most of all, so thank you, Robert, for that. Also, congratulations, I know I sent out an email, but I do want to say again, I can't say enough, for the Police Community Day, and what a turnout, doubled the participation rate, doubled the attendance, it was a beautiful day, we had the helicopter out there, we had drones out there, we, we had Major, our newest police dog, out there, the kids were having fun, all the vendors here in town, everything was, you know, our, our, our local store owners, you know, gave pop and popcorn, and so, it was just a great event, so I can't say enough, and congratulations to the department again for that. Tomorrow night, hopefully we'll have another good night of weather, we're going to have our second annual employee pool party, and the good news on that is that, since we changed the date, the number of people coming almost doubled, so we're anticipating about 80 family members and employees, so I'm very pleased with that, and hopefully, hopefully you all can stop out and say hello to everybody as well. And last, I want to say that tomorrow, at Rice Park, at our newest splash pad, it's still operating, from 1 to 3, we'll have pop with the cop, and I attended a couple of those last year, and it's a, another community outreach, and I think our police department and our fire department, by the way, was also there at Community Day, do a tremendous job of outreach to people, and getting in touch with the children and the parents, and so, I congratulate both those departments, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Alvarado.
I can't stress enough that Wilmer should mow in, and that means when you mow your lawn, have your grass steppings go onto the grassy boulevard, and not in the streets, we have to have the motto that Wilmer mows in. The other thing I want to highlight is, I had the opportunity, the privilege, to ride along with Officer Tim Wallace on Friday night, and I spent six hours with him and his team, and talk about examples of our community values, excellence in the delivery of service, quality service, ethics and integrity, visionary leadership and planning, open and honest communication and professionalism. Those gentlemen out there on the front, frontline, were exemplary of what we want for our, our public servants, and I, I can't thank them enough for what they do, they, they were very professional, it was a great experience. We've got, we've got a lot of talented men working for Wilmer, one guy's a parachutist, a master parachutist, and one guy's a pilot, I mean, the list goes on and on about the talent that we have in Wilmer. I'm very excited to have had that opportunity, and if you should, I would encourage you to take advantage of it, and, and ride with a cop, a police officer, pardon me, and enjoy that, they, they really exemplify our community values, and hats off to them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you. I just want to repeat that I am so excited that Brit Hadeem is hired to work out at the community center, I'm happy for the senior citizens out there, and the community center activities, that we now have somebody in that building, that is just a wonderful step forward, and I just have to say, if anybody that's listening right now, that watched this meeting tonight, you have to be excited about living in Wilmer, when you think about everything that just happened at the city council meeting tonight, and we talked about businesses expanding, and selling a possible large lot out at the industrial park, so development, and hats off to our city development, planning and development director, and our economic development, for all of these exciting businesses that are going into lots, and into vacant business dwellings, and it's, we are growing, we are, this is exciting times, and I look at the culmination of years of work with, that are, that are citizen-driven from the curling facility, for two years they've been working on this, and the dedication and the commitment of the citizens working on the local option sales tax, that are, are trying to just make things better for this city, to, to people for, to live here and to work here, and we're also addressing the housing needs, I mean, this was an exciting meeting tonight, and this is, this is positive forward movement, that we should all feel good about, and very proud, and, and that we are blessed to be in this community, and be in the position that we are, to be able to have these positive things happening, and this is a great city.
Councilmember Mesky.
Happened again, I'm just going to pass. I can't, that's, that was great, ditto, wonderful comments.
Councilwoman Plowman.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna let it go too, but you did hit on some great points, we covered all ends of the spectrum tonight, with a lot of the work that we did, and I would say fantastic, but let's use that to challenge ourselves, because that shows that Wilmer's growing and diversifying, and that we gotta, sometimes the issues aren't always fun, we still got to tackle them all head-on, and, and we're all here and, and getting it done, so, thanks, everybody, for the hard work.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to remind everyone, school will be starting here shortly, so pay attention to pedestrians and the school buses, so.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just thank you, and have a good night.
Councilmember Christensen.
State Fair starts a little later this week, and I'm wondering if we have an update on the bathroom banded at the parks? And has it happened more, or did we catch them, or?
Just kept them closed.
Do we know?
Councilmember Christensen, to my knowledge, we have not caught them yet, but we've changed the hours of opening, and so, they're only open during the, the hours that Public Works is there, so that we don't, we're hoping to cut down a little bit of the overtime to clean up the mess afterwards.
So, no more incidents?
I can't say no more incidents, but I think they've reduced, however, I know for a fact that some of them have progressed into private businesses, doing the same thing.
Oh, boy.
Well, thank you.
Councilwoman Schwantes.
Thank you.
Can you get a motion, do you?
I move.
For adjourn.